Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call the order. The City Planning Commission for March the 5th. Please call roll, please.
Commissioner Woodard?
Here.
Commissioner Michelle?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Taylor?
Present.
Commissioner Shook?
Present.
Commissioner Statchell?
Here.
Commissioner Black?
Here.
Chairperson Taylor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Brown. Next, we have the Planning Commission Creed and approval by Commissioner Williams.
The Newport News Planning Commission is mandated by state law and its members are appointed by city council. Section fifteen dot two dash twenty-two-ten of the Code of Virginia states in part that every locality shall create a planning commission in order to promote the orderly development of the locality and its environment. The statutory purpose is to improve the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the citizens and to plan the future development of the communities. In serving this statutory purpose, the commission invites to comment at the public hearing of its interested citizens of matters before it and welcomes your presence. Chairperson Taylor, I move we adopt the agenda before us.
I second the motion.
Okay, the agenda been moved and properly seconded. All in favor of the agenda, just say by aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Hearing none, we'll move on. We now have our invocation by Commissioner Michelle.
Let's pray. Father, we just begin by asking for just safety for everyone in this region affected by the storm that's passing through. And then we also just ask that you would continue to give us wisdom in the decisions that we make today, that we recognize the sacredness of this responsibility that we have to steward this city. And so we just ask for your clarity and your direction, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next, I pledge allegiance by Commissioner Black.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag into our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the minutes. We have, we've all received the minutes from our February 5th meeting. Is there any questions, concerns, or corrections to the minutes that we received? Hearing seen. Are entertained a motion to accept the minutes?
Move for a ten approval of the minutes I submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So minutes accepted. We have, we would like now to declare the public hearing open. And the first item before the commission is a conditional use permit. Conditional use permit two zero two five tag zero, zero, and Ernie House, the grooming of the greatness learning center. And this will be presented by a planner, Mrs. Saul. Casey Saul. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. You're all doing okay. We have application CU twenty-twenty-five zero-zero-zero-one. Application is by Man Group of Real Estate LLC, which is the owner, and Ernie Shia House from Groom for Greatness Learning Center, who is the applicant. They are requesting a conditional use permit for the operation of a childcare center. The property is located at six-seventeen Randolph Road and contains point ninety-one North, south, east, and west are single-family homes on property zone R four, single-family The adopted One City One Future Twenty-Forty Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map identifies low-density residential uses for the property. The childcare center will provide a much-needed service for the residential neighborhood, making it compatible with this designation. The property has been zoned R four, single-family dwelling since the citywide comprehensive rezoning became effective on August first nineteen ninety-seven. Section forty-five dash four-oh-two of the city's zoning ordinance permits a childcare center facility in the R four, single-family dwelling district with the approval of a conditional use permit. The Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Education licenses and regulates and monitors childcare providers. A license will be required meeting the Virginia Department of Education regulations prior to starting the operation of the childcare center. Childcare center. City departments had no objections to this request. The applicant currently operate two successful groom for greatness learning centers in Norfolk and Virginia Beach. She has been operating licensed centers since twenty-fifteen and is proposing to open a new center in Newport News. She plans to convert the existing structure on the property which was originally built and operated as a church into a childcare center. Ms. House has received approval from Virginia Department of Education for a functional design request for a capacity of sixty-eight children at the Newport News center. The licensing approval of the center is contingent upon many factors, including an onsite visit by the Department of Education. Building plans meeting all city and state code requirements must be submitted and approved by the city prior to the licensing. The site is centrally located within a large, single-family residential neighborhood and it is easily accessible both by pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Based on the preliminary plans, the structure could house up to sixty-eight children. The center will accept children that will range in age from six-week-old infants to children that are five years old. The center will also provide before and after-school services and summer programs for six-to-twelve-year-old children. The hours of operation are from six-thirty a.m. until six p.m., Monday through Friday, excluding holidays. The center will operate with ten full-time and three-part-time staff members. An outdoor play area of at least four thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet is required. That will be located within the nine thousand square open space area at the rear of the The play area must be fenced and a secure path from the building to the play area must be provided. In conclusion, the location of the proposed childcare center facility is well-suited to provide a needed service to the surrounding residential neighborhoods, and it is consistent with the One City One Future Twenty-Forty Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map designation. The new use will be no more impacted on the surrounding homes than the previous church use. Hence, it is recommended that city planning recommends approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-twenty-five zero-zero-one to allow for the operation of a childcare center at six-seventeen Randolph Road with thirteen conditions that include: The childcare facility shall comply with all applicable license requirements, standards, and regulations as administered by the Virginia Department of Education. The license must be maintained in good standing at all times during the operation of the childcare facility. The program shall operate within the proposed floor plan. The total number of children permitted in the program shall not exceed sixty-eight children. Okay. An onsite outdoor fence, okay, play area shall be provided. The childcare center shall maintain a designated secure path between the building and the play area and shall maintain a one-way circulation pattern for the pickup and drop-off of the The applicant shall obtain a building permit for the additions and rehabilitation of the property. All standard conditions also apply. All thirteen conditions are detailed in the staff report and will be part of the ordinance approved by council. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Sergio.
Do you have a question?
No, it's you.
Oh, okay. The sign, the six-foot sign? The six-foot sign?
It's presently there.
Is that a new sign, the six-foot sign?
They didn't show us a sign, but if they want to have a sign, it will have to be reviewed and approved by the director of planning.
I'm just thinking, in a neighborhood, a six-foot sign, you know, is pretty big, right in the neighborhood, because there are houses right, the houses are close to the street. The second thing is that will the sign be, the sign will be illuminated?
The applicant isn't here, unfortunately, that's what I was noticing, but she did not provide us a sign. She didn't tell us she wanted a sign, but if we don't have a prohibition, they would be allowed a sign on the property. So that's why we put the condition in.
Would it be illuminated, is my question?
In terms of what's currently there, it's a wood sign. It's about five and a half feet tall, and it does have those spotlights that show off.
Yeah, but not internally illuminated.
Right, but we would review that as part of their application, and if, you know, we felt that it was not appropriate, we would tell them.
They're not...
Go ahead, Commissioner Williams.
They don't have any plans on taking down any of the foliage, the trees, or anything as part of their...
No, they didn't mention anything like that.
Did you, I think you said the requirement was going to use the same footprint? Did I understand that?
There is no change on the, on the footprint of the building. They are using the same building. They are making some new openings because they are required to have access directly into their rooms where you have children younger than, than four years.
Okay, I have one quick question. And I think I noted it in your statement, the ages for this facility. There were, repeat what you said, six weeks to...
Twelve-year-old.
Now, see, that's what I was getting, because I reading, in, reading their brochure that is attached to our information, it says from six years, six weeks to twelve years. And I think you said it was that twelve years will be for the summer program only.
The six-to-twelve-year-olds will be there for before and after-school programs and summer programs.
Okay, okay.
And Commissioners and Chair Taylor, if you have questions that we cannot answer because the applicant is not here, you can always have the option of continuing this case.
Yes, ma'am. I don't think, go ahead, any other, any other questions? Just one quick one. Yes.
I'm going to assume then also that they're going to use the back as their entry. They're not going to create like a, like a horseshoe in, in the front.
No.
Okay.
Well, the plan, wait, 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 wait.
All right, do we have any other questions? I've already opened the public hearings, so if there's anyone from the audience that wanted to speak, I'd like, all right, I would like to close the public hearing and the issues before the commission.
Chairperson Taylor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation for conditional use permit CU dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-one.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any other questions or comments that you want to add? Hearing none, please call roll.
Commissioner Woodard?
Four.
Commissioner Michelle?
Four.
Commissioner Williams?
Four.
Commissioner Shook?
Four.
Commissioner Statchell?
Four.
Commissioner Black?
Four.
Commissioner Taylor?
Four.
Motion unanimous, seven to zero.
All right, this item will be heard by city council on March the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Okay, the next items we have on the agenda are special exceptions. The first one is special exception two-zero-two-five tag zero, zero, zero-one, NCR Homes and Construction LLC. And this will be presented by city planner Zakhar.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, we're just trying to get the presentation corrected.
You broke it, Saul.
Why you sat down so fast?
While we're waiting, Commissioner, are you aware of that? We will meet upstairs right after this. Katie. Next. She said she's going to feed us. The floor is yours, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
This is application SE twenty-twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-one by NCR Homes and Construction LLC to construct a two-story, single-family detached dwelling on a non-conforming lot of record with less than fifty feet of frontage. The property is located at twenty-eight-ten Roanoke Avenue and contains approximately point zero-eight-six acres. Here is the aerial of the property. To the north and east are single-family homes on property zoned R four, single-family dwelling. To the west is Antioch Baptist Church and public parking lot on properties also zoned R four, single-family dwelling. And then to the south is a convenience store that is also on a R four, single-family dwelling This property is zoned R four, single-family dwelling, and has been since the citywide conference of rezoning became effective in nineteen ninety-seven. Section forty-five thirty-two oh-four of the zoning ordinance states that the board is, Board of Zoning Appeals may grant a special exception to improve a non-conforming lot of record having less than fifty feet of frontage for a single-family dwelling, provided that the proposed dwelling, the single-family dwelling shall be two stories or of similar design to adjacent structures. The proposed dwelling will be two stories with a front porch of similar design to the adjacent single-family homes. The front yard setback of the single-family dwelling shall be the average of the setbacks of the existing buildings on the block, but not less than ten feet. The front yard setback will be thirteen-point-four feet to the covered porch. C, the minimum side yard setback shall be five feet. The proposed side yard setbacks, as shown, are five-point-one. And D, an attached or detached garage shall be provided. However, if the garage is attached, it shall be attached on the side of the dwelling and recessed eighteen feet from the front of the dwelling or attached in the rear of the dwelling. An attached one-car garage recessed eighteen feet from the front of the building is provided. And requirement E, the proposed dwelling is in harmony with the appearance of surrounding properties and does not create a harmful effect to the neighborhood. The proposed single-family dwelling uses prevailing architectural materials similar to the surrounding homes. It will have a covered front porch, siding, rectangular windows, and an A-frame roof, that roof line that faces the street. While the adjacent home does not provide a garage, it does have a curb cut and driveway The proposed request to construct a two-story, single-family dwelling on a non-conforming thirty-seven-point-five-foot-wide lot meets all applicable criteria stipulated in the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that planning commission recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals approval of special exception SE twenty-twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-one for the construction of a single-family detached dwelling on a non-conforming lot of record having less than fifty feet of frontage with ten conditions that include: The applicant shall submit building plans and elevations for approval to the Department of Planning to be reviewed and approved by the Director of Planning prior to the issuance of a building permit. The first-floor front facade and the base of the structure shall have a brick veneer and the front steps shall be of brick material. All other standard conditions apply. The ten conditions are detailed in the staff report and will be part of the BZA approval. Any questions?
Any questions?
And the applicant is here.
The applicant is here? Okay. Any questions? Okay, I will open the public hearing for this issue. Is there anyone that wants to speak? The applicant, are you going to speak in favor, I'm assuming? Because I don't have a card on this one at all.
No, sir. Not unless anybody had any questions for me, no, sir, I don't need to speak.
Okay. No questions? All right, I'll close the public hearing. The item is now before the commission.
Chairperson Taylor, I move that special exception number two-zero-two-five tag zero-zero-one be approved with conditions as recommended by staff.
So moved by the zero-zero-zero-one.
Is that a correction?
Yeah.
Restate your motion, please.
I move that special exception number SE tag two-zero-two-five tag zero-zero-zero-one be approved with conditions as recommended by staff.
Any other questions, any more comments? Please call roll.
Commissioner Michelle?
Four.
Commissioner Williams?
Four.
Commissioner Shook?
Four.
Commissioner Statchell?
Four.
Commissioner Black?
Four.
Commissioner Woodard?
Four.
Commissioner Taylor?
Four.
Motion unanimous, seven to zero.
Wait, this, this item will be heard by the plan, zoning, this will be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals on March the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. And the next item is also by Mr. Zakhar, the adding of special exception two-zero-two-five zero-zero-zero-two, NCR Homes and Construction LLC.
Good afternoon again.
Floor is yours again, sir.
As you said, this is an application SE twenty-twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-two by NCR Homes and Construction LLC to construct a two-story, single-family detached dwelling on a non-conforming lot of record with less than fifty feet of frontage. Here is the property located at eleven forty-nine Twenty-Fourth Street, and it contains approximately point zero-nine-one acres. Here is an aerial map of the property, highlighted in yellow is the parcel. To the north, east, and west are single-family homes on property zoned R four, single-family dwelling. To the south is Messiah Baptist Church and other single-family homes that are... To the south is Messiah Baptist Church and other single-family homes that are on also property zones R four, single-family dwelling. Here is the zoning map again with the subject parcel highlighted. The property has been zoned R four, single-family dwelling since the citywide conference of rezoning became effective August first, nineteen ninety seven. Section forty five dash thirty two oh four E of the zoning ordinance states the Board of Zoning Appeals may grant a special exception to improve a non-conforming lot of record having less than fifty feet of frontage with the single-family detached dwelling, provided that A, the single-family dwelling shall be two stories or of similar design to adjacent structures. The proposed dwelling will be two stories with a front porch of similar design to the adjacent single-family homes. The front yard setback of the single-family dwelling shall be the average of the block of the setbacks of existing buildings on the block, but not less than ten feet, apologies. The proposed front yard setback will be eleven point one feet to the covered front porch that projects into the front yard setback, which meets the average of the block and the ten-foot minimum required setback. C, the minimum side yard setback shall be five feet. The proposed side yard setbacks are shown as five point one feet, meeting the required five-foot minimum setback. D, an attached or detached garage shall be provided, however, if the garage is attached, it shall be attached on the side of the dwelling and recessed eighteen feet from the front of the dwelling or attached in the rear of the dwelling. This proposal has an attached one-car garage recessed eighteen feet from the front of the structure, meeting this eighteen-foot requirement. And E, the proposed dwelling is in harmony with the appearance of surrounding properties and does not create a harmful effect to the neighborhood. The proposed, the proposed single-family dwelling uses prevailing architectural materials similar to the surrounding homes. It will have a covered front porch, siding, rectangular windows, and an A-frame roof line that faces the street. While several of these surrounding homes do not provide garages similar to the previous location, many have curb cuts and driveway spaces. The proposed request to construct a two-story, single-family dwelling on a non-conforming thirty seven point five-foot wide lot meets all applicable criteria stipulated in the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that planning commission recommends to the Board of Zoning Appeals approval of special exception SE twenty twenty five dash zero 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 two for the construction of a single-family dwelling, detached dwelling on a non-conforming lot of record having less than fifty feet of frontage with ten conditions that include the applicant shall submit building elevations, including exterior building, uh, building materials and colors to the Department of Planning to be reviewed and approved by the Director of Planning prior to the issuance of a building permit. The first floor front facade and the base of the structure shall have a brick veneer and the front steps shall be made of brick material or shall be of brick material and all other standard conditions. These conditions are detailed in the staff report and will be part of the BZA approval. Are there any questions?
Do we have any, yes.
Doesn't look like the floor plans and the elevations match.
And it was that was submitted.
And like the windows and the elevations and things aren't lining up, but just a comment.
The applicant is here.
This question. Okay, let's, hold on just a second, sir. Do we have any other questions for Mr. for Officer City Planner? Any other questions? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing, and we do have one card. And please come forward and state your name and your address, sir.
James Riddick, my address is three thirty Thelma Lane, Portus, Virginia, two three seven zero one.
And Mr. Riddick, you are the owner and developer builder?
Yes, sir, I'm the owner builder.
Okay, now we can possibly answer the question that was, or a point that was made by Ms. Commissioner Sargel.
I'm just looking at the elevations, they don't seem to match the floor plan.
Okay, I don't know, I don't have the elevation in front of me, is there any way I could take a look at one?
It may not matter.
Can you tell me what you're seeing, because I don't see what doesn't match.
I'm just looking at the side elevations and where the windows are and.
Oh, the side elevation and the elevation that you.
The floor plans. And it probably, honestly, it probably doesn't really matter because I'm going to go by the floor plan and not the elevations.
I see what you're saying, on the, on the right side elevation, the windows aren't exactly lining up, correct?
Yeah, and the left. Yeah, 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 and there's like, but it probably, you know.
Actually, they do.
No, they don't.
The, the bottom floor does. The first floor does. You have the living room with the double window. And then you have a window over the kitchen or.
Yeah, that does, but the left side doesn't.
Okay.
You have an extra window in the elevation.
Left side, on the left side you have, here, I'll show you.
Yeah. But it, 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 it's a technical thing. I mean, I'm going to go by the floor plan.
Okay.
So, Mr. Riddick, I'm, I think we've worked that one through ourselves. But since you were here, sir, do we have any questions for, uh, Mr. Riddick?
No.
None? Mr. Riddick, thank you so very much, and thank you for coming forward.
Yes, sir.
So with that being said, I'll close the public hearing, and the issues before the commission.
Chairperson Taylor, I move that special exception number SE tech two zero two five tech zero 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 two be approved with conditions as recommended by staff.
I'll second it.
Okay, so it's been moved in properly second, your last chance, no questions, no comments? Please call roll.
Commissioner Williams?
Four.
Commissioner Shook?
Four.
Commissioner Statchell?
Four.
Commissioner Black?
Four.
Commissioner Woodard?
Four.
Commissioner Michelle?
Four.
Commissioner Taylor?
Four.
Motion unanimous, seven to zero.
All right, this item will also be heard by Board of Zoning Appeals on, on March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Okay, the next item we have is special exception two zero two five zero 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 three. Blue Chip Realty Corporation, and that'll be presented by City Planner Saul Garcia.
Hello again.
Hello again, sir.
Now we have in front of you application SE twenty twenty five zero 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 three by Blue Chip Realty Corporation, where the applicants and owners. They are requesting a special exception to construct a two-story, single-family detached dwelling on a non-conforming lot of record with less than fifty feet of frontage. The property is located at six oh four seventy fourth Street, and it contains point eighty acres. North of the property, we have single-family homes and party apartments on property zone R four, single-family dwelling. East and south, we have single-family homes on property zone R four, single-family dwelling. And west, we have the New Market Apartments on property zone C two, general commercial. The property has been zoned R four, single-family dwelling since the citywide comprehensive rezoning became effective August first, nineteen ninety seven. As you probably know by heart by now, section forty five, three, thirty two oh four E two of the zoning ordinance states that the Board of Zoning Appeals may grant a special exception to improve a non-conforming lot of record having less than fifty feet of frontage with a single-family detached dwelling, provided that A, the single-family dwelling shall be two stories or of similar design to abutting structures. Although the prevailing height of structures on the block is one story, there are two-story homes in proximity. Further, there is a two-story apartment building abutting the property to the west. The proposed dwelling will be two stories with a front porch. The facade of the first floor will be brick to match the prevailing materials of the homes on the block. The proposed front yard setback will be thirty-two feet to the face of the home with a six-foot covered porch that projects into the front yard setback. Thus, the front of the structure will be twenty-six feet from the property line, which meets the average of the block and the ten-foot minimum required setback. The proposed side yard setbacks are shown as five feet, meaning the requirement. An attached one-car garage recessed twenty-four feet from the front of the structure is proposed, meeting the eighteen-foot requirement. The proposed single-family dwelling uses prevailing architectural materials similar to the surrounding homes. It will have a covered porch, a brick veneer facade and foundation, siding rectangular windows, and an A-frame roof line that faces the street. All of the surrounding homes have curb cuts and driveways, and many have garages. As such, the proposed dwelling is in harmony with the neighborhood. In conclusion, the proposed request to construct a two-story, single-family dwelling on a non-conforming thirty-five-foot wide lot meets all applicable criteria stipulated in the zoning ordinance. Hence, it is recommended that planning commission recommends to the Board of Zoning Appeal approval of special exception SE twenty twenty five zero 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 three for the construction of a single-family detached dwelling on a non-conforming lot of record having less than fifty feet of frontage with nine conditions that include the applicant shall submit building elevations, including exterior building materials and colors to the Department of Planning to be reviewed and approved by the Director of Planning prior to the issuance of a building permit. The first floor facade, front facade and the base of the structure shall have a brick veneer and the front steps shall be of brick material. All other standard conditions apply. Ten conditions are detailed in the staff report and will be part of the BZA approval. Are there any questions?
Well, just one clarification, you said ten conditions, I got nine, did I miss one somewhere?
He said nine.
Then I heard ten.
The previous one had ten.
I apologize, just had to hit something. Okay, uh, thank you very much, Saul. Any questions or comments? For Saul? No questions, no comments. Okay, I would like to declare the public hearing open. And I have two cards. In no particular order, these two cards are in opposition, so I'm gonna open the floor for, um, Mr. Goldstein, Irving Goldstein?
Thank you, I'm Chip Goldstein, or Irving Goldstein.
Can you pull the mic down, sir?
I'm standing up. Um, thank you all for being here, thanks for all you do. Uh, my biggest, our biggest concern with it.
Mr. Goldstein, before you get started, sir, can you state your name and your address?
My name is Irving Goldstein.
Your address?
Um, my, uh, my home address is in York County, but my, I have an office in Newport News at seven four one J. Clyde Morris.
Okay.
In Newport News. And the reason I've come here today is I'm associated with the adjacent owner, the New Market Apartments. And, and we've had address problems ongoing there, and I called Saul, and I noted that when this was noticed last time, the applicant was at an address of six oh two seventy fourth Street, because we, this was snowed out at the last hearing. Now it's six oh four seventy fourth Street, so we've had an address change, which is hopeful for me. But my issue, and the reason I'm here, is our address with the apartment building on the corner has been referred to many times as six hundred dash six oh four seventy fourth Street. And, and when I have tried to have evictions done there and I get an order for six hundred seventy fourth Street, the sheriffs refuse to serve it because they say it has to be either on six oh two or six oh four, depending which unit we're talking about in the apartment building. So, so then I have to go back to court and get another order. So what I would like is, is for the address confusion to be cleared up once and for all if, if this is going to be constructed. The, and I think Saul has done something to, because as I said, the first notice said this was an applicant was at six oh two, now it says six oh four. But I, I want to use the opportunity to get these addresses correct if possible.
Okay, so your opposition that you're proposing is not for this project, it's for the address?
Well, it's for the, the confusion this address is going, that, that this construction and development would cause, is my concern. In, in other words, we own the apartment buildings or associated with the owners of the apartment buildings, so I'll get a court order in accordance with the lease, which is six hundred seventy fourth Street, I believe. But then, the sheriff won't serve that because they say, oh, that address is really six oh two, or that address is really six oh four, depending on which apartment unit we're talking about within the building. Our, our property, the apartment building property is, this property, the applicant's property is point oh eight acres. It's thirty-five feet wide and a hundred feet deep. The apartment lot goes much further back.
Right.
And so it's been assigned all these addresses, and it, and it's going to lead to confusion. It already leads to confusion, and so if that's been straightened out, wonderful, I, I don't have an objection, but if, if this address is duplicative or, or redundant or otherwise causing confusion, I have an absolute objection to that. It, it is confusing.
Okay.
And you can imagine even if there was a fire or some emergency, I, I got it, it's right next door. But, uh, but that should be straight. We, we shouldn't build a property that's got a, an address that's redundant on the street.
I understand, sir.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yes.
So this was brought to our attention, and the Sheriff's Department did contact us. We then, planning staff then contacted the assessor's office and our GIS department, or IT, which is within GIS. Anyway, they realized that there was a discrepancy. The property address that you're referring to for the apartments is addressed as six hundred. However, the apartment building is addressed as six oh two, unit one, six oh two, unit two, unit three, four, five, up to twelve. So what we did with the assessor's blessing and GIS is re-addressed the one that was six oh two to be six oh four. So the property address, the, the parcel ID did not change, but the physical address of this property is now in our GIS system. If you go to our GIS Newport News, um, website and look up our GIS system, it'll say six oh four. And the Sheriff's Department and the police and fire were very thankful of that, so thank you for bringing it to our attention. We just didn't even know that that's what the problem was. So it, it has been fixed.
Hold on just a minute, oh, oh, so the problem has been resolved as.
That issue has been resolved, it is now in our, in the assessor's office. Any mail that goes to this particular, the property that you're looking at right now, it'll say six oh four. It will not say six oh two.
Roger that. So back, before you go to the question, the question, does that, does it sound like it's fixed the problem that you think you, that maybe have?
I, I'm not sure.
Come back up, sir.
I appreciate, I appreciate all of this that's been done, thank you. Um, I don't know if that really resolves it, because this is the first time, is my first notice that it's been. notice that it's been resolved. Saul told me he was going to do something with it. I appreciate that.
Okay.
And he and he may have sent me an email. The next person who's you have listed
Yes, sir.
may have some more to say about that. I am, all I have to say is what I'm saying.
Roger that. Any questions for the gentleman?
No, I just want, so again, point, point of clarification. The apartment complex now is six oh two seventy-four, unit X.
It has always been that way, apparently.
Okay.
It's.
The apartment complex, while the lot is six hundred, the physical is two, et cetera.
All right.
And we're looking at six oh four. Got it. That was before they thought it was six oh two, but it's really now six oh four.
Correct.
All right, so everybody has their own and unique address.
Right.
All right.
So with that being said, do we, we no longer have any, does anyone else have any questions questions for Mr. Goldstein? Okay, the next card I have in same with the same address, at least Mr. Goldstein, I have the Lindstrom, New Yorktown address. So Ms. Lee, uh, Ms. Wayne? Could you please?
Wong.
Ms. Wong? I apologize. Please state your name and your address, please.
Yes, my name is Bailey Wong, and I address four four five Lindsay Landing Lane in York County. I'm the, it's been ongoing issue as Mr. Goldstein said, so I want to make sure I understand better. So the proposed construction on the current new updated address is a six oh two or six oh seven four?
Six oh four.
Six oh four, okay. I want to write that down so I can, I won't be confused.
That's okay.
Yeah, six oh four Seventy Fourth Street. And my apartment, my lot, parking lot, is still referred at six hundred seventy-four.
The apartment, from my understanding today is the lot is six hundred.
Right.
The apartment buildings are six oh two, subsequently six oh two, one through twelve.
Okay, so basically, whatever existing on the city tax map is related to my building is still same. Six hundred is the parking lot in front of the apartment. Apartment, each unit is still referred to six oh two. One or two. The only thing changed is the next door.
Right.
Okay, then that's make much more sense. We've been having issues with mails, deliveries, sheriff and the post office. So other than that, and I'm not a very good person to reading this plat. So just be patient with me. The question is, according to this survey, I see the six-feet chain link, which is my property I put up there, but it's not set on my property line. I just want everybody, five feet, right? So whatever the construction, that five-feet setback is from the real line.
Yes, that's correct.
But the line is not, my my chain link is not setting on the line. Okay, all right. I want that to be clarified. That's all my question. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So do anyone have any questions for Ms. Wong?
No.
No questions for Ms. Wong? No, so I have no further questions or I have no further cards. So with that being said, I will close the public hearing. The matter is now before the commission.
Chairperson Taylor, I would like to make a motion that we accept special exception permit SE dash two zero two five dash zero 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 three, as recommended by the commission, by the planning department, with all exceptions noted.
I second.
Any further questions? Please call roll.
Commissioner.
Four Seventy Fourth Street.
Commissioner Woodard?
Four.
Commissioner Michelle?
Four.
Commissioner Williams?
Four.
Commissioner Taylor?
Four.
Motion unanimous seven to zero.
This 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 matter will be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals on March the eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Thank you so very much for coming out for that one. The next items that we have on our agenda is Executive Secretary Report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Oh, thank you. On February the eleventh, City Council approved the conditional use permit for the small contractor's office at twelve six eighteen Warwick Boulevard. On February twenty-fifth, council denied the change of zoning requests from R four single-family to R seven medium density for properties at six twenty-eight and six thirty-four Old Fort Eustis Boulevard, and approved the conditional use permit for the car wash at sixty-one oh two Jefferson Avenue. And on February the eighteenth, the Board of Zoning Appeals denied the special exception for the single-family dwelling. Okay? Coming on March the nineteenth, you will have two special exceptions for single-family lots, lots, non-conforming lots of record at eleven fifty-four Twenty Fifth Street and eleven twenty-three twenty six, Twenty Sixth Street.
So I have a question. Like on the Scufflefield Road site, does that, that does that then go to City Council?
No.
No, it stops at Board of Zoning, okay.
Yeah. It went to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If the applicant appeals, it would go to Circuit Court.
They are?
I don't know. If they appeal.
It doesn't go.
Welcome our newest senior planner, comprehensive planning, Regina Jensen. She's here. She's worked with us before. I think it was probably only about four, no, about five years ago.